Tuesday, January 29th. My name is Jim Leehan, to my left is Mr. Calcutt. My associate, Mr. Palumbo, had an unexpected death in his family. And he and his wife had to go to Long Island for a funeral today. So, our sympathy to both he and his wife on their loss. This meeting is being both audio and videotaped and is available on Norfolk Cable. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will apologize once for my voice, which may leave me. And then we'll just all listen to Mr. Calcutt for the rest of the evening.
Hopefully mine sounds better.
Can't sound worse. Anyway, we have a long agenda tonight. I won't go through it all, we'll take it as it arrives, if you will. It is posted. But first on the agenda is a transfer of a Class II license. And I believe we have both gentlemen here. So, please join us.
Hello, gentlemen. My name is Philip Ibrahim.
This is Joseph Wolf.
Do you want to speak?
Yeah, please. There you go.
Thank you.
My name is Philip Ibrahim, and this is Joseph Wolf. I've known Joseph for probably the better part of a decade. I live here in Norfolk since probably four or five years now. And I've been a car dealer in Walpole since 2001. I asked Joseph that someday if he decided that he wanted to slow down his business to give me the opportunity. And he was kind enough to take me up on it. And so, we'd like to transfer that license to an LLC. And he'll stay on. And we'll be utilizing it for our service and some sales, as it has been utilized for the years past.
So, no change in the type of business, everything?
No, sir.
Just a change in ownership?
Yes.
Okay. Kevin?
No questions.
No questions.
I spoke with Bob Bullock. All is clear there.
Terrific.
I just wanted to note that upon the transfer of the premises and the bond, then you would be able, if it's approved this evening, to come in and pick up your license. But those are the two items we'd still need.
Thank you very much, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the transfer?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you, gentlemen. God bless.
Thank you.
Always good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda, Mr. Bragdon. Scott, if you don't mind, I think we'll just defer this for a little bit because it's turned into a broader discussion, if you will. Unless you want to title it now, what's your pleasure?
That's fine, we can hold off as we get through the other items.
Okay. Todd, why don't we get right into the budget? I know you've been ready since 3:00, because I was with you. So, we're good to go. Just for those at home, this is a process that normally the town administrator, quite honestly, would go through with Todd. And we would be informed by the Todd administrator.
Thanks.
But as we are absent of that right now, we're sort of filling in on that role. And we've been working with Todd in the various departments. I know Kevin has been working with DPW on their budget. And this is our first draft of it. And Todd, I'll let you walk us through.
Sure. So, as you stated, this is a little bit of a process, and we're early on in the stages here. We're still waiting for information from a few different items. But this is kind of a quick stab, best guesses. Again, using some historical information, but also trying to come up with some best guesses of where we anticipate ourselves to be. First page that you're looking at is the revenues. So, that's the monies that we're going to be receiving in. Our tax levy base last year, along with the 2.5% growth and new growth that we anticipate of about $625,000, minus the abatements, leaves us a tax base of about $31,298 currently. That number's not going to change unless we anticipate new growth to increase. But I'm trying to be a little bit conservative on the new growth approach. The local receipts are items, motor vehicle, interest, department, revenues. We get licenses and permits, fines, forfeitures, as well as meals, taxes, and things of that sort. So, those are all the local receipts. Currently, I had those pretty much just a hair under last year's local receipts. Again, I was a little bit more aggressive last year on a couple of items. So, I wanted to be a little bit more conservative on the first go around. And then, once we need to tie things up, we can put some better numbers in, shall we say. And one of those items, for instance, the miscellaneous non-recurring, we have as $90,000. Well, it's typically the prison mitigation monies. And I don't want to anticipate that we get it every year, because there have been years that we haven't gotten it. But I'm putting a conservative number of $90,000 in there to carry over. Cherry sheet estimates, that's coming from the state funds. Those came out, rough numbers, they're pretty much in line with what we received last year, just a little bit more to start with. But throughout this budget process, those always go up and down, and we make adjustments accordingly, depending on how the budget at the state level works. But right now, we're looking at about, just a hair under $4.3 million. So, that brings our total operating revenue, $39 million. Doesn't include any free cash. In years past, we've used upwards of $300,000 plus free cash in order to bring the budget in balance. Trying to get away from using free cash. So, again, we'll see how it plays out through the budget season, once we finalize some numbers. But the budget itself includes all the departments and their asks for currently, with no limitations. Again, I told all the department heads, you know, if you don't ask for it, we can't help you out.
Right.
To give you a better picture overall, where we're at. So, is the revenues. Any questions on the revenues?
There's four cells highlighted. Did that have special notation attached to them?
So, those are from the earlier today. I had new growth in at 600, a little bit lower numbers on some of the other ones, and we bumped them up just a little bit to better align what we anticipated. They're highlighted because those are the ones I changed from my original.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Next page is basically the budget drivers. It breaks it down. Revenues in blue are fixed costs, those things that really don't change. We have to pay them regardless. And then, the discretionary costs are the ones from the different departments in orange down below. Some of the numbers I had to plug for the elementary school, I'm using a 4% change from last year for their budget. I haven't gotten their finalized budget amounts, but that's what they're targeting, as well as a 4% increase. And then KP, in order to put a number in there, we looked at last year's assessment and added on another 3%. Year to year, the KP budget is higher for us, and it's lower for us. We get hit sometimes a little bit more aggressively some years. It all comes down to the MLC calculation, which Jim has tried for how many years?
Too many.
To figure out.
Been wrong every year.
So, again, we're trying to figure out roughly where we're at. We'll have some more information. I believe they have a presentation on Monday. I'll be attending that to find out where they're at currently. And then, obviously, we'll have a talk back and forth.
I'll have that number tomorrow.
Yep.
For you.
So, that's kind of how it breaks down. On that page, you'll see at the bottom, surplus and shortage, about $800,000. Don't get too scared, because that's typically where we start. Like I said, as we go through this process, as we start to tighten up some of the numbers and have discussions with some of the department heads, we get that number to actually get to zero, oddly enough. Next page is employee benefits, big items. Medical insurance, right now, I have it as a little over 2.5% increase. They've given us a range of anywhere from a negative amount to a positive 5% on the high, with the average of around 1% to 2% for increases for people across the boards. They gave us a range. And then, we have to figure out when they actually get to the point, which is a couple months down the road, when they actually give us the numbers. So, but I put that in as a placeholder for now. Kept most of the other items pretty much in line. The other outlier is the state and county retirement. Unfortunately, we just have to pay the bill as it is. They give us a bill, and that's for all retirements, basically the OPEB portion, which I'll talk about in a little bit. So, that's the proposed employee benefits. Next page, the excluded debt. This includes King Philip. We have some debt with them that'll be coming off in the next few years. Library, the Freeman Kennedy School, and just recently, the Public Safety Building, which has been added on. And we'll be going for the bonding of the rest of that amount in February, late February, early March, to complete that process. So, that's all the excluded debt. Then, the next four pages are basically a summary of the budget by departments. There are a couple of items that are highlighted, and those are Sleckman's Office. I'm not sure what a number, so I had to put just a number in when we finalize, obviously make some changes there, or what have you. Kept their expenses flat for that. Advisory, decreased salaries a little bit. It's a stipend. And based on the hours, we anticipate a little bit less hours. Expenses are about the same, and the reserve, $50,000 for the budget amount, is the same. So, overall, it's a little bit of a decrease. Municipal finance, it's a great department, if I don't say so myself. So, salaries, that's salaries not only for my office, which includes the assistant accountant and the county clerk. I also have in here the chief assessor, the assistant assessor, the assessor's clerk, and also a data collector position as well. It's a part-time data collector position, which I anticipate that position to really generate new growth, hopefully pay for that position itself, as well as the four positions in the Treasury Department. Keeping the expenses about level, there was a couple of increases due to postage rates, as well as some software costs. Our audit fee is going to be flat again, which is actually about $9,000 less than historically that we've paid. They've come in, they're not here very long, so they don't need to charge as much. Keeps the fees where they are. Board of assessors, they have a couple of items there, software costs, and some expense for training associated with that. That's flat. Town council fees, bless you.
Bless you.
Town council fees, I've reduced that a little bit. Waiting to finalize what the numbers are for this year. The requested amount of $95,000, I don't know exactly 100% where we are. I know that we're in line with coming in under that at the moment. So, I'm not being too aggressive in my ask for the town council fees next year. Hopefully, we won't have a lot of issues. Human resources is the standard increase for salaries. Information technology, in that is salary increases, and then the expenses, that's highlighted, because the expense actually requested included about $40,000, which is really geared more towards capital. And I'll talk about capital in a little bit, as far as what I'm planning to do there as well.
You're going to pull that out, though, aren't you?
It's already pulled up.
Okay.
So, that's why it's highlighted with the 96. Tax title foreclosure, keeping that flat. Salaries management, that's, again, salaries have gone up with the contractual and the 4% pretty much standard. The expenses have gone up, and most of the expense going up is related to elementary maintenance, where we take over the oil and propane from the elementary schools to help them out with their budgets. And that's the biggest increase. There are some other smaller increases. But again, a lot of it has to relate to oil, and the fact that last year's oil prices were much lower than what they were this year. So, we have to budget accordingly. Town clerk is going down, not as many votes anticipated, or elections anticipated, so that's gone down. Wetlands, just the standard increase. And that's a separate special revenue fund, doesn't impact the general fund itself. Planning board, their expenses are in line with a 0% increase. Excuse me, land use, they've asked for regular salaries across the board. One of the positions has decreased 10 hours, but they're also adding in another 30-hour position in that department. And then, town reports is flat, and that's always been right around 1,600, 1,700 bucks a year. Police, I'll let chief talk about his budget a little bit. That is the full ask for, though. Same as fire, that's the full ask. Essentially, with fire and ambulance, we always have the ambulance receipts, which I utilized some of the funds last year to help offset the numbers. So, again, when we get to the balancing act, I might have that to go. The ambulance billing, which is the billing that we pay for our ambulance billing, that service that we do, they underestimated the past couple of years. We've increased that up to $25,000, which is where the bills actually amount to. Building department, let's see, standard increases, small expense increase, weights and measures, emergency management, all the same. Animal inspector, smidge on the salary, as well as animal control, in order to reflect what the contractual requirements are. And then, fire and police, which is the new emergency management, MedCom building for dispatch, our contractual. I believe Jim is going to give me a number for that, but I plugged in the 250 for there. Norfolk Elementary, like I said earlier, we increased that 4%. They're going to try and keep within that amount. King Philip's at 3%. And I don't have the information as of yet from Norfolk Aggie or the tri-county schools, but I bumped it up a little bit. So, hopefully, they come in a little bit less than what I anticipated. DPW, I won't go into full detail. You know, Bob's going to be presenting at one of these Sleckman meetings. He did go up on his administration. Couple of people have been retired, a couple of key people at the department head level, and then also at the administration office. So, he's trying to factor that into the equation. So, you'll see the increases on the salaries for the DPW administration, the highway department. Vehicle maintenance, this is the standard increase, but they did have some additional expenses that need to be covered. And then, grounds, ground cemetery and custodian, all pretty much the same. There is an increase in the cemetery. I think he's trying to get a few more hours out of that department. Landfill, pretty much a little bit less on the expenses. Snow and ice, we have to keep that the same ask as last year in order for us to emergency spend. So, I'm just keeping 250 flat. Sometimes, we're going to probably exceed $250,000 anyways. And it's just, you know, departmental transfers throughout the year.
Have we ever come in under that number?
No.
No?
Not to the best of my knowledge.
We've come in close. We've also come in twice as much.
Yeah.
It's the only item we can deficit spend, and you can't go backwards, what you said. We've been increasing it. It used to be about 150. I think it was about 150. And we've been increasing it slowly. But you don't want to go too far, because you can't take it backward.
Right.
Bob likes to keep putting on $25,000 every year, but it just doesn't work that way, because if, like he says, if you do ratchet it up, then you have to do it every year, otherwise. Street lining town vehicles, flat, no increase. Transfer station, again, primarily for salaries to cover that for the contracts. Florida Health, special programs, flat. Florida Health, actually, the LSP was last year, the $40,000. We're not going to allocate that there, so that's why there's that significant drop there. Council on Aging, that includes a salary request for additional time for a driver, and I think additional time for another position. I'm probably more familiar with that than I am. Veteran Services, flat again, zero increase. Library, a couple of positions. She's looking to add a part-timer, I believe, which accounts for that 5% increase. Recreation had a big jump. That's due to a salary increase for the director, given to by the town administrator before. And then, Historical Commission and Memorial Day are both flat. Employee benefits, as we saw earlier, that's going up 5.5 in total. The primary factor for that is the retirement portion. Building liability insurance, that's going up about 4%. That covers workers' comp, all of our vehicles, and all the building liability, general liabilities. Our debt service is going down. We're only doing $512,000 this year. That's not going to change. And then, that brings us to about $40 million. Adding that, plus, I talked about the revenues, we are at a small deficit of about $800,000, which, like I said, in years past, our range is anywhere from $700,000 to $900,000 from out of the gate, and then the discussions happen back down from there. Any questions in the budget in total? I know some of the departments are going to come in to have discussions, to give the police chief and maintenance department tonight, so.
Kevin?
Well, it sounds like for a first blush, that everything is relatively falling into place as we have seen it in the last couple of years. I don't think there's anything really too egregious out there, too hair-raising at this point. Obviously, there's a lot of discussions still to be had, so I don't really have anything to add at this point.
Okay. Nor do I. And this is my best.
Like I said, as I go through this process, you guys will have access on the Gmail account, so you just click on that anytime.
Which is really helpful. Thank you for doing that.
And I do want to thank Todd for, although you've taken the lead on this pretty much for, since you've been here, it is the finance director's job. But a little bit more cumbersome this year, in that you are the direct resource for it. So, thank you for the work you've done on it.
No problem. I have a couple other things, unless you have any other questions on the budget.
Go on.
Okay. So, a few things I'm doing in the office, updating some financial policies. We have a bunch of financial policies in place. There are some that are lacking as far as particular topics. Don't ask me which ones. So, what I'm trying to do is work in conjunction with Department of Local Services, DOR. They've worked with other towns regarding financial policies. There's a lot of towns up there. Some financial policies are only, you know, 15, some are 180. What I'm trying to do is find the best of the best within those policies and draft, redraft the policies that we do have in place. And in conjunction with that, I'll be working on a five-year forecasting. So, the budget that you see is a year budget. And what I'd like to do is try and put together a forecast, so we can now start to track trends and things of that sort, to help us plan a little bit better on a going-forward basis. That, along with the capital plan, that I'll be getting from my department heads, that I have gotten from some of those department heads, will help me create a capital plan as well. And those two items will go a long way, because when we did the bond, or when I went through the process of the bonding last time for the Public Safety Building, one of the things the S&amp;P Global people that were recommending were those two particular policies. While we had them, they weren't formalized. So, we're going to be formalizing those two particular aspects, which they've indicated will help to possibly improve where our rating is. So, with that being said, we have a bonding process that's going to be starting in February. So, I've got a little bit of work between now and then to make sure that all happens, and I don't see that as a problem. But just wanted to give you guys a heads up, because you will need to formally adopt kind of whatever I do come up with. So, I'll be communicating with you as I go through that process. So, again, that's the five-year forecasting, the capital budgeting, talking about the financial policies that kind of have what I have in place, but making it a little bit better. And then, the fraud and risk program. Talked about S&amp;P. The other thing is, it's the elephant in the room, but nobody wants to talk about it, which is OPEB, which is the benefits for retirees that keeps going up and up and up. I've looked at it, I've talked with others in the community. I've reached out to Plymouth County OPEB Trust. I've reached out to our folks at Rockland Trust. I've talked with our auditors, who also provide services for this. The auditors who offered to do the trust, which would include setting up the trust, writing the trust documents, helping us on an admin level going forward, but they wanted to charge quite a hefty tag. And I think it was anywhere from the get-go out of the gate of $7,500 to $15,000. The good thing about Plymouth County and Rockland, they realized all the communities need help. So, they're not going to charge for doing all the trust work, because they have a template. It's already been approved by the IRS, all that. They charge on the assets, yes, that's where they're going to get their money. But since we don't have anything in place currently, although we do have a small amount, it's like less than $1,000, I think, sitting in a OPEB trust. It's not really a trust, because it's not separate. It does have to be its own separate legal entity and all that. So, between Plymouth or Rockland, I looked at both of them. Rockland is pretty much a flat fee on the assets, so there'd be no cost to set this up. They'd only charge us on the assets. And I propose to at least potentially look at doing $50,000 a year to start going in this. Obviously, we can make determinations where our free cash is...
What do they charge? Is it asset-based charge?
Asset charge.
10 basis points, 5 basis, what do they charge?
They charge 50 basis points on the first two, 40 basis points on the next three, which is a hair less than what Plymouth charges. Plymouth charges 20 basis points for trust admin on the first 10, and 31.5 on the assets under 5. And then, it's a decreasing scale from there going forward, once you hit those different thresholds.
And they're reasonably equivalent. They're close.
So, it's one, but we have the relationship with Rockland on a bunch of other accounts and everything.
Not a big enough difference to pick one versus the other. Half a percent's not bad.
So, I haven't finalized anything, but I just wanted to bring your attention. Probably going to move forward at some point. I'll let you know what I need from you guys to move forward with that. Probably need a vote. But I just wanted to get that in your head, so you can start thinking about it.
It would be nice to get that in place this fiscal year.
It can be done.
That's a good idea.
That's all I have. Any other questions for me?
No. Thank you for being so proactive with this stuff. Appreciate it.
No problem. Todd, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
By the way, how is Hillary?
Oh, she's recovered.
Is she okay?
She got bit by three ducks.
Oh, geez.
On a call.
Today?
No, last week. Last week.
Wow. She's doing okay?
Serious bite marks, and she's still sore, so.
Nothing on the face, I hope.
No, no. Lower torso.
Well, please give her her best.
Yeah, I will. All right, so, over the, one budget you're not seeing from me this year is the communications budget, first time in about 30 years, and haven't had some involvement in that. So, that's now going to be under the mech, so that one's off my list, which I have. The animal inspector, and for those that don't know exactly what the animal inspector does, has a responsibility of checking all the homes in Norfolk for farm animals and waterfowl. People have ducks and geese, and they also have cows and horses and goats and sheep and things like that. He has to do a fine book count and turn it into the state once a year. And it's right about now that he should be wrapping that up. So, that's one of his responsibilities. The other one is if there is a, like a dog bite, or they found a rabid animal in town, he's supposed to quarantine that dog for 10 days, and that's one of his responsibilities, send out notices for that, and then make sure that they follow up with treatments or anything else. So, that's, so the budget you see here is nominal. It's $2,500 plus, and he put it in for a 3%, which was, seems to be what other town employees were getting at that time. So, any questions on that in particular? Pretty easy, actually. The next one is animal control. So, we just talked about her. So, she's still a one-person department in the town of Norfolk. She's been the animal control officer for the town for well over 20 years. She actually started part-time in the mid-'90s. But one of the things that Hillary's an instructor at the Animal Control Academy in Boylston. She's active in writing and putting forth legislation regarding animals. So, we're really lucky to have her. She's, she was recently on the, and for the last three years, been on Governor Baker's task force on animal cruelty. She was the only animal control officer in the state to be chosen, to be put on that task force. She's had many... She's had many roles in the Animal Control Officers Association and is very active in that. She's been active recently for us, and been writing up a mutual aid pact for the budding towns' animal control, so when somebody needs a week off of vacation, they cover the other town, so they have to have a mutual aid agreement so that they are covered when they go to the other town. For, and just for like what happened the other day, where she went to Millis and we're waiting for Millis to sign that mutual aid pact, so she went to Millis on a call and for what was purported to be a deer through the ice down at the river, the Charles River, she went to her house near there and ended up getting bitten by a dog, the three dogs, so it was a tough, tough situation, so. And the last thing I'll bring up is she's been very active in promoting low-cost microchipping for the animals, so help you find the animal if they're, or recognize that it's yours, or, so she's been up to that. So, and again, I put her in for the three percent budget increase for, that was on the classification schedule for her grade and step, so any questions on that or about her? She has a vehicle, it's a pickup truck that she got several years ago, she still seems to be going good. DPW does a great job at keeping it going, so it's not that old yet, but. Long time she had a retired police car with about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand miles on it, which really didn't work out very well, especially if you-
No place to put the animals but the trunk.
Can't put deer that she has to go pick up in the middle of the night or other, you know, things that happen during the night, you know, pickup truck was the way to go.
Yeah.
And she's got a winch set up in the back of it to help bring the deer on, so, you know, they do get heavy and it usually takes a couple of people to get it in there, so.
I imagine.
And, so. Any questions on that? You wanna go further into it, or?
No, I don't have any questions on mine.
No? Okay.
Good truck.
All right. Last one that I have is the police budget. Now, I'm using, this year I'm, we were asked to do a level service budget going forward, so whatever everybody was supposed to be at their grade and step, and then I gave a three percent guestimate for salary increase. We're in the middle of contract negotiations right now, so I'd have no idea where it's gonna end up, both in the salary and expense, but I just took a shot at it so we could have a placeholder for Todd to be able to do budget prep. So, the contract expires June thirtieth, so we're good till then. So, the department, as you know, Jim and Kevin, they're getting ready to move to Fortune Share and Ave. So we targeted the last week in March, and the MECC opens up April, April first, so we'll be up there from then, you know, moving forward from there, so. We're really excited about it, 'cause this past couple of weeks, past month, going further, you know, there's a, there's a real reason why we needed to build a couple of buildings, and it's starting to become evident even, Matt is doing the best he can, but it's real difficult to keep up with the things that keep happening, leaks in the roof, you know, the cold. When we had that minus or zero-degree weather recently, everybody was frozen, it was just, just not getting enough heat through the building to keep it warm. And we're talking about we have a R-42 insulation factor at the new building, I think we have R-1 at the building we have now, so, you know, just, I know that's not the right number, but it feels like it, and we do to find out again on Wednesday, Thursday this week, so. Everybody that doesn't know, the department has twenty-one full-time officers, one of the things, and two administrative staff. We typically try to have ten reserve officers that are available to us, and they help out with various things like filling shifts, when people are on vacation, sick, or holiday or training, the reserve officers and the full-time officers all share in that load of filling the shifts for those that aren't, that are off or have time off. So, and they go through training, just like the full-time officers do, and they have to keep up on that training in order to be able to work. You'll see them occasionally out in the street, they might be doing a road detail, or you might see them in a cruiser. If there's people you don't know, it's starting to get to that point for me, is that sometimes I don't recognize them anymore, 'cause they're all new, so. One of the things that we try to do in the, in the police business is we try to keep two officers, two officers for every thousand people in town, and that's, that's the number that the federal standard used to be, it still is, and we're, as you know, if we're at twenty-one and we're hovering in the twelve-thousand range for our population, so you'd think it would need to be about twenty-four, but we're at twenty-one, but it seems to be at a comfortable level for us to operate, so. We haven't been overrun by anything, so, you know, it's like, we have a, we have a good department, a bunch of really good, and now getting younger, because some, the guys are starting to retire, so I was gonna, I'll be mentioning that in a couple of minutes. Department has a school resource officer, I think most of you know her, Michelle Palladini, very popular at the school. She has a lot of programs, she's instituted and runs on her own over here at the restaurant, they talk to a cop program on Wednesday mornings, once a month, and she also has some other programs she runs. Very, very busy, and very active, so, you know, it's a pretty good thing. Still have the deer program down at the elementary school, even with the retirement officer Plinton, we were able to work that out with the school, so he's, he's down there, just wrapped up for this year. And at some point in time down the road, we'll be looking at finding one of the newer officers to take over for that, so.
Is OPE gonna continue for a while?
He's gonna, until we can get one of the newer officers trained to do it. It's an extensive training program, so it's gonna take a little while. I know Jim, you know Kevin, I'm pretty sure you've heard, we have three officers who are in the academy right now to replace some retirements in a new position, so, and they'll be expected to be graduating February twenty-second. We have another one starting February fourth, and he'll be expecting to graduate just before, just at the end of the fiscal year, so June thirtieth. So, that'll bring us up to, back to twenty-one again. So, you know, I've been saying, I'll write up for a long time now, the last five or six years, if anyone's listened to what I've talked about at the budget meeting, is that we're doing succession planning, and we have a whole group that have gone out, and I've lost six since two thousand and fifteen, six officers have retired. So, and we have another four, I have two in next year's budget, so that's, Deputy Chief Carroll and Officer Dagnem are the two that we're talking about. Following the year will be another one, that's Soufun Shari, and then a couple years after there'll be me, and there could be, you know, and some others in between that just choose to retire, not because of their sixty-five, but just because they've got enough time and it's a personal choice, but at sixty-five, you have to go, so. So, once we, when we get to that point, there'll be, you know, the succession planning will be for the top positions, and you'll probably be involved in that, so, at that point. And you've seen the, I mean, if you look at the police budget, it is up, but it's, it's Not a lot I can do, because it's contractual and it covers the positions that we have, so.
You also have some buyouts.
Have, well, it's in the, in this coming budget, it would be Deputy Chief Carroll and Officer Dagnem, so. So, we'll, we'll work that out the best we can, and we'll help out wherever we can, so.
I'm sorry, is it reflected in this budget or not reflected in this budget?
It is reflected in this budget.
It is, yeah.
A little bit of money in there for, in the expense that's over and above last year's, and it has to do with what I'm anticipating, it might be a contractual request that's coming down the road. We have a couple of hardware requests for a computer at the station and a software expense, so when we get to that-
Excuse me.
Get drilled down that a little bit further, that comes into this next year's budget, so. Expenses, or capital, I should say. Two things that we always look for in the police, in the police budget is two cruisers. This fall, we got one, and we may get May, you know, looking at another one for the spring if there's money available. It's always a good idea to keep them rolling around through the system. We tend to keep them about five years, and at the most, six. That equipment is-
Sorry, no, that was me, sorry.
-good for six years that we put in them, and that we drive them, and they're well over a hundred thousand, and they always multiply that times four for hours on the engine, so, and between the electronics and the electrical systems, that's a lot of time that the cruisers are running. The good news about our new station is we won't have to run them twenty-four-seven, even if they're not driving. Like in this past weather, when it was a snowstorm, you know, we have to keep them running twenty-four hours, and you can't go out to the car and spend five minutes scraping when somebody needs you someplace else, so. So, the new station, and I know you've probably been out there, it's got a lot of room in that garage for us to put them in, and we're so happy about that, and it couldn't be happier. So, we're looking at that, two cruisers, and this year's bill was a hundred and fifteen-thousand five hundred for two. So when we go into the, into next year, we're no longer have nine, nine-one-one-
That's twenty grand more than we paid last time, isn't it?
Well, here's, here's one of the other issues, it'll be, it's gonna be more than sixty thousand a car. Part of the reason for that is that we will no longer have the nine-one-one grant to put the tablet, the laptop in the, in the car, and the mounting equipment. That's usually been funded from that. That now goes to the MECC.
Right.
So we won't have that, so.
I forgot about that.
Now, the other thing we have in a car is the e-citation printer. When we, when we have, these days, with electronics and all the beautiful things they have out there and police equipment, you can write a ticket, and it's not like the old ticker book, it's right on the computer and it prints it out and then you hand it to the person. So that's now in each cruiser. Well, you put it in there once, and it stays there five to six years, however long you keep the car. So it's not like some towns lease their cars and every three years they gotta roll them over and move them to another car. So the equipment we put in the car stays there for six years, so. Now, the only other thing I had on there for equipment that I've talked to Todd about was the portables and mobiles for the, for the department. One of the things that's going on in the, in the police world around here is that everybody's going to do digital communication. It's clearer, better, stronger, so already Walpole and Franklin have switched over to digital.
Bless you.
What that means to us is that we can't talk to Walpole and Franklin, so when we talk about interoperability, meaning when we go to a scene and say, and say Franklin has an incident, and we go there, we have to talk to him face-to-face, we can't talk to him over the radio or on a portable, so we need to be able to step that up. We're understanding that Rentham's gonna be going shortly, Millis and Plainville, so there's, other towns are gonna be doing it. It's not a cheap bill, but what we can do, what we've been starting to do is buy digital-capable mobiles, and we, and when we buy two cars, or one car with it this year, we make it a digital-capable mobile. That doesn't, my guess would be it'd be better if we started out, if we were able to go to portables, because no matter where we are, we're always gonna have the portable on us, and the mobile, we're kind of restricted, we gotta be in the car.
Right.
So, if we went to that first and then did the mobiles phased, that might be a way for the town to be able to absorb that cost or, sort of, or in easier time. So, portables, we're talking about something, it's called a Harris one-eight-five portable, thirty-five of them are seventy-four thousand. What we typically do is buy twenty-one, one for each officer, and then have two or three, four, for, in case, 'cause you're gonna have breakdowns, I mean, it might break, it just might stop working, we gotta send it out, it's gone for a month, maybe more, we gotta give them something to use, so we'd have a couple extras, and we do have ten reserves. So, if there, if we have people on a call, they would use those portables, so. And we talked about staging, phasing that, or, and so, you know, trying to work with Todd on, on how to accomplish that goal. And the mobiles are about four thousand and twenty dollars each, just to give you a ballpark, and the portables are about twenty-two forty each, so that's the cost, so if you're, you're looking at that, and Todd has those numbers in his capital. Anything you want to talk about?
No, your, your budgets chief and my tenure have been always very good. Always done a good job. It's never a surprise.
Okay. Kevin?
Oh, it's very good, thank you.
Yep. I'll be, I'll win over.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Yep.
Tough act to follow, Matt.
I want to thank you for this lovely printout, Matt.
Facility's budget, there's a large, large increase being asked for, and the majority of it, it's already been explained by Todd, is we're taking over the fuel lines for the schools. Couple reasons behind that, as one is to help balance the school, but also for purchasing That's adding, my request is a hundred and ten, right now we're at fifty, but it's really, really shy at the schools, so I'm asking for one-ten because it's, to give a little breathing room, because fuel doesn't seem to be going down. So that was my major driver of the increase, but what I've done on this form is, what I currently have, what I'm asking for, difference in percentage-wise, kind of showed where it went up. So, at Town Hall, we've been spending a lot of money on the fire alarms, everything's getting older, so requires more maintenance and repairs are costlier because parts aren't as frequent, as easy. Lot of electrical, pretty much it's all utilities and maintenance of the building. One of the reasons why the phone went up massive is because with the whole new station, we need to provide a whole new phone backbone. I have everything, it's been set up in years past that all the phone bills get billed at Town Hall, doesn't matter where they're at, I have it all, so I kept it there instead of starting to pull it out, because I didn't wanna start pulling out the COA and the DPW, so that's why I didn't land it on that request, but the reason being is because the new station, we need to have a new PRI, we need to have some additional copper lines, 'cause we also have to maintain it down at the other stations, so there's a big, you have multiple public safety buildings, you have multiple phone systems. And all my oil lines, all my fuel lines, I've asked, gone up a little bit on them. Again, a lot of my, a lot of the issues that I have in the town are constant electrical upgrades. People are using more electronics, there's more systems that people wanna run, so, and then another thing is we just trying to keep up with changing out the LED and trying to maintain all the different electrical systems. If you guys have any questions on any of them, but I'm just trying to highlight. Another large driver is the new fourteen Share and Ave police station. I've gone up on that, 'cause that's a completely new system, but on top of that, I'm also, we have a binding contract with the Medicum Emergency Communications Center to maintain their space, so we have a thirty-six-thousand-dollar income from that, from their services, but we have to do all the custodial, providing all, so to go with any one of our buildings, providing all the toiletries, doing the maintenance on their equipment, with a budget to do their H-back, their generator, only thing we're not covering for them is their electricity, their fuel for the generator. That's pretty much it. Everything else is gonna be included, but they're paying for the service, so the money we're taking in, I'm trying to apply it back to that building. One thing I'm not sure on is the electricity usage, 'cause that building is ninety percent electric heat and cooling. It's very well, it's very efficient, I think I might be a little high, but I don't know how it's gonna be to cool the building. There's a lot of electrical in there which could also drive it, so that is the one line that I have asked for, just to be on the safe side. Twenty-seven-five, 'cause I figured a comparable building and fuel and their electricity usage, 'cause we also have to- because we also have to, a lot of the buildings presently, we use towards solar credits. We have to cover the regular billing usage and we also have to replace the fuel with electricity, so that's why that number's quite high. But there's also going to be diesel costs because we have huge generators which shouldn't be massive, but there's also going to be natural gas because the satellite port has natural gas, so I have multiple fuel lines in there. So, basically, the schools and the schools' fuel oil lines and the fourteen share and a half and the MECC are the major drivers. My salaries, contractual obligations and estimated coal raises with step are the other drivers, but pretty straightforward. Not sure what, what you guys have for questions.
Todd, I have one for you. Have you, have you plugged in the income and expense component for the rec yet? Okay. I have their, I have their expense numbers. And do you know the revenue numbers? I have the lease agreement if you haven't seen it. All right, I'll get that to you tomorrow. It's a net plus, so that's the good news. And you've, you've plugged in your costs for the maintenance component and you have not plugged in the thirty-six revenue. Okay.
Between the lease and the income from maintenance, this building, I'm hoping, will be a neutral cost.
But you've plugged it into your expense. He hasn't plugged it into the revenue side, right?
Right.
So, does eighty-two thousand eight hundred sound about right for expenses related to the MECC and police station?
Now, take thirty-six off of that-
Right, that's what the offset will be.
Well, you're also gonna take some rent off of that too, which is the neighborhood of around forty-five, I think.
Okay.
We get rent from the MECC.
Okay.
And I, I think it's, don't hold me, I think it's forty-five, but don't hold me to that. Duly noted. There's also, this, Chief, now that I think of it, there's also a salary component to that. Well, there'll have to be a component, there'll be a sharing of the cost of the dispatch between the four towns.
That wasn't his budget?
Is that in your budget already? You've covered those numbers in the salary?
Yeah.
Okay. I know it's out of yours, but it is in yours? I missed it, I'm sorry. Okay, thanks. I should've known. Kevin?
No questions.
Okay. Nice job, Matt.
Think of any, I'm more than happy to respond. Tried being conservative as possible while maintaining a quality, you know, try to do a quality job for the town and maintain the building, so I wanted to ask for a lot more, but again, trying to stay within a reasonable request, even though it seems high, it's kind of pretty close to, if I excluded the big new building and the oil, it wouldn't have been too much, so.
We appreciate it, thank you, Matt.
Okay. Kevin, do you want to just get through some of these shorter action items?
Sure.
Is that agreeable?
Absolutely.
Hang on just one second, I'm saving my document. Thank you.
All right, Sue, with the exception of the first one, why don't you run us down through the action items?
Okay, so I have the bond anticipation note for the new ambulance from Anne Marie that requires signatures and a vote this evening.
Yep. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How many of these do you want signed?
I'll put this pile here, we'll do it at the end, okay?
Done, okay.
It was very loud, Kevin. Next on the agenda is we have received from William and Beverly Slattery, a notice of intent to sell land under Mass General Law sixty-one A. I have emailed Cindy Andreid, who is the Chair of CPC, because this would be something that would go to that group first. So, I have checked with Cindy to see if she has received it, I have not heard back. I do want to let you know that today we received a telephone call from a resident up in that neck of the woods who wanted me to express his concern over another development going up so close to where there are a couple of developments happening right now. I said I would bring that to your attention. So, no vote needed on this. I will probably be bringing this back before the selectmen, I would anticipate, in a few weeks. Just to let them know what CPC's decision is.
This is probably the first sixty-one A, I think that, we don't get a lot of them, but this is the first one, I think you had. Can I fill in any blanks on it or?
If you want to go through the high-level summary, sure.
Okay. It's the, the, thank you, guys. The date of purchase, the purchase and sale is when the clock starts and the town has a hundred and eighty, a hundred and twenty days of first refusal. It's a non-negotiated price, we have to match the price that's on the sale. You can't negotiate it, so CPC would have to do an appraisal, decide whether or not they wanted to purchase it, have to go to a town meeting. It's within a hundred and twenty days, I think, if my math is right, for a spring town meeting. I don't, when was the bill of sale? I don't have a copy of that.
It's actually the day they brought it in to me. It was January seventh, so the hundred and twenty days starts that.
Today, sure.
It's a one point two five zero.
But that, the hundred and twenty days is gonna expire prior to the town meeting. It's four months roughly. Close.
Yeah, I think if, I'm not sure, but I, if there was some discussion-
I don't think you can condition it.
Forward, I'm not sure, I'd have to talk to Cindy.
We'll have to check it out.
We'll have to go to CPC for that information, so I'll get that information.
I know that that's about fifty percent of what the CPC has in their funds.
Right.
So, that's a substantial purchase. And I think this backs up to the property that's already under development on the Rentham side.
Not sure, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
It's pretty close to it, because that's where the gramary logs are.
It is close.
It's pretty close. And this says not less than twenty houses.
Right, it does say that.
On thirty-two acres, right?
Correct.
So, it would be a standard development plan. You're on the planning board, Kevin, but unless it's, you know, an open space or what have you, but it's not a forty B.
Right. Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Next is please consider appointing Carol Green as the municipal hearing officer relative to fire code ticket issuance. This request was sent to us from Chief Bushnell.
Jack was the one before. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Quick question, is this something that we'd have to transition back to the role of town administrator once that role is filled, or is this something that we're doing moving forward?
She could, she could continue that role.
Very good, gotcha.
Yep.
So-
Probably a good thing, actually.
Yeah. So, in that case, I move to appoint Carol Green as the municipal hearing officer relative to fire code ticket issuance.
I'll second. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have please consider a one-day liquor license to serve, not sell beer and wine requested by the Norfolk Cultural Council at the Glimpses of Norfolk, a community photography show to be held on February ninth from five to eight P.M.
Uh, library, range?
You know, hang on, I just-
It says here, library, yep.
It is in the library, yeah.
Library.
And it's, I know, only because my wife has been contributing pictures, it's gonna be really cool, be a nice event.
Yeah, sounds great. All right, so I move to grant the one-day liquor license to the Norfolk Cultural Council event at the Norfolk Public Library on Saturday, February ninth from five to eight P.M.
Second. A favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and next is, Kevin, maybe you can, this email came in from D-CAM. Another item for the twenty-ninth meeting agenda.
Yep, so, this is in relation to the land transfer coming from the Department of Corrections.
Yep.
We voted on this at our last town meeting and so now we're working on the next steps with our friends over at the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance. I had a quick call with Reina, the project manager over there, and she outlined for me what the next steps are really gonna be. She said typically she'd be working with an overlying town manager, town administrator on these types of things so they can coordinate between the individual departments that are involved.
Right.
We talked about how we were in process of bringing somebody on and I think that where we left it with her was that we were going to wait to see where that process landed and then talk about what the next steps were gonna be. She did outline that this is about a year-long process. There are a couple of steps that we talked about, some that are on our side, some that are on their side. But we're gonna be circling back up again at the end of February, which is when I said would probably be a good range of where we were with bringing somebody new on in our hiring process. So, regardless of where we move forward with that perspective, I think that that'll be the next step to touch base with her and perhaps we should just coordinate on who's gonna take the lead on that and who's gonna coordinate. And there's gonna be some involvement with town council, DPW, people that interest us.
Okay. Wait till February.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you for following up on that.
Absolutely.
Next is, I came in from the new library director, to please consider a request from the Norfolk Town Library to display a different story walk on Town Hill for the first week of every month, May through October, excluding colder months of the year.
Questions?
No, that sounds great.
It does to me, too. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, Kevin, do you wanna present this one?
Um, this is parking permits, yes, absolutely. So, a quick rundown. We started to experience a little bit of some capacity in our MBTA parking lots that we have in town. We currently have three lots that MBTA manages. Those three lots have been hitting capacity about around the nine o'clock, nine-twenty-five trains. In an effort to try to mitigate that flow, we had a great meeting with the police chief, DPW director, our parking administrator and our town planner to talk about what some of our options were to help mitigate that volume. We have some long-term things we're looking at, but realized that we needed to come up with some short-term ideas with the anticipation of snow taking up some of those spots if not properly cleared. What we landed on was the availability of thirty-four spots on Liberty Lane that are currently marked as two-hour parking spots, which was done in anticipation of the commercial development in that area. Well, we don't have any commercial development coming in the short term to that area. So, what we did was the DPW department transitioned those signs over to permit parking signs, which was done early this morning. That we currently have notices out to the community identifying that those spots will be open for lottery with application, much in the same way that we do all Town Hall.
We've had our first application.
We have-
We have many.
Oh, do you have many?
We are just about at the thirty-four, actually.
I've only seen one, but that's great. Do we have thirty-four?
We have, pretty close.
That was quick.
The deadline for application-
We better approve this.
The deadline for applications is six P.M. on Thursday and then we'll be doing the lottery anytime between, you know, Thursday and Monday.
I think it's a great idea. All for it.
I think that, you know, this not only helps mitigate some of the flow and the volume concerns over in the MBTA lots, but also offers residents fantastic and cost-effective alternative to parking up there in those lots.
And eliminates the argument over two-hour tickets.
You got it.
Yep. Do I have a motion? I'll make the motion. I move to approve thirty-four additional parking permits alongside Liberty Lane.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Great idea.
Okay, next, please consider Jeff Chalmers' letter of interest for the Town Government Study Committee.
Jeff, I know you, I know Jeff Chalmers certainly fine with me. You brought him forward, you wanna make the motion?
Absolutely, I move that we appoint Jeff Chalmers to the Town Government Study Committee for a term of, one year are we doing?
I think it's for the length of the, however, I don't believe it has-
No defined term.
I don't think it has a defined term.
Okay, for no defined term.
As long as the group is in existence.
There we go.
Yep. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jeff.
Next I have please, this came from the assessor's office. I just need you to sign the Caritas property exempt from real estate taxes under the provisions of MGL, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Five, Clause Third. So, that is simply a signing. The assessors have already signed it.
Got it.
I think we still have to vote it.
Yeah, I would vote it just-
Yes, we have to vote it because it's a payment in lieu of taxes.
Correct.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We will gladly take the sixty-eight thousand dollars.
The Norfolk Exotics, we're gonna table that until next week after further review of the license. I found out that I needed some additional information that needs to be clarified. I did speak with the individual that's brought this license forward and let him know that I just need to get some formal measurements of the building, if you will, that needs to be included on the application. So, we're gonna table that until next week. Next is please consider opening the town warrant for our upcoming-
Excuse me.
-town meeting. I did provide you with a memo, so what we would be voting this evening is to open the warrant on January twenty-ninth. All warrant articles would be due in final form by four P.M. on February twenty-eighth. On March fifth, the Board of Selectmen would close the warrant and review the articles. On March sixth, the warrant would be sent to Town Council. On March nineteenth, the order of articles and the warrant would be drafted. An annual town meeting is scheduled for May fourteenth, May fifteenth if we require a second evening, and we've scheduled for May twenty-first if we need a third evening.
And you forwarded that all the advisory board?
I have not forwarded this to the advisory board, it's typically not done until after approved by this board.
Do I have a motion to open the warrant?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I think we can get rid of these warrant items real quick because I think I'm-
They are all you, Jim.
They're all mine, yeah, lucky me. Hopefully, my voice will last. I move to approve the warrants as of January fifteenth in the amount of three-hundred-and-eleven-thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and fifty-three cents. And on, also on January fifteenth, the amount of ninety-two-thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety dollars and seventy-five cents. July, excuse me, I don't wanna keep saying that. January, because I want it warmer, I guess that's the reason. January eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. I apologize for my voice if it leaves me here. On January twenty-second, in the amount of six-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents. January eighth, two thousand nineteen, seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars and twelve cents. January fourth, seven-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty dollars and seventy cents. December eighteenth, nineteen, eight, two thousand eighteen, one-hundred-and-eight-thousand, six-hundred-and-eleven dollars and fifty-eight cents. And December eighteenth, in the amount of one-thousand-four-hundred-and-eleven dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and next I would ask that we approve the following minutes. The following minutes reviewed and accepted by Kevin Calcut are May twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, executive session; May twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, open session; June twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, open session; September eleventh, two thousand eighteen, open session; October thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, open session; October thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, executive session; eleven-thirteen-eighteen, open session; twelve-seventeen-eighteen, open session; twelve-seventeen-eighteen, executive session; twelve-twenty-four-eighteen, open session; one-fifteen-nineteen, open session; reviewed and accepted by Jeff Palumbo; two-twenty-seven-eighteen, open session; April twelfth, two thousand eighteen, open session; reviewed and accepted by Jim Lehan; three-twenty-six-eighteen, open session; four-twenty-three-eighteen, open session; July twenty-fourth-eighteen, open session; ten-seventeen-eighteen, open session; eleven-twenty-one-eighteen, open session. I do just want to mention that the executive session minutes would be for approval this evening, but not for release, they are still under executive session.
Very good.
And I want to, I want to thank you and Nancy for, I know with Marion Harrington's illness and departure, that left quite a burden on the two of you and I want to thank you both for working so diligently to get these all coming.
Thank you, she's been a pleasure to work with.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have one unanticipated piece of business which he posted. I spoke with town council to ensure that we followed the proper procedures on this, and we received a communication this morning at 11:30 in the morning from our candidate for town administrator that we had chosen by vote. And he wrote the following to Mr. Bragdon. "Dear Scott, please accept my withdrawal for consideration of the town administrator position in Norfolk. I met many wonderful folks who worked for the town of Norfolk during this process. This is not an easy decision for me, but my family and I feel that I should remain with the town of Franklin in position, which I do love. Thank you again." This arrived at 11:30 this morning. So, we posted it immediately thereafter to allow us to have discussion on next steps as to where we are with this, so. Let the conversation begin. I'll start it. So, we're, I wouldn't say we're at stage zero, but we're close. I'll just outline, I see it, you add to it-
Sure.
Correct wherever you feel appropriate. We had two other finalists that we interviewed. We would have the option of potentially going to one of those two finalists and making an offer to them for that position if we deemed that appropriate. Don't know whether they'd consider it or not, but that's an option. We have another option, which says that we would like to interview further candidates. We could ask the search committee to get back together, along with a consultant, to review the portfolio of how many they have, I told it's in the 30s, and see if there are any other candidates for whatever reason they now deem appropriate to bring forward for consideration, and we could interview those candidates. All we, that's step two. Step three would be that we could ask the consultant to add to that list of candidates. There's been some time, I spoke with him, and he said there might be some other candidates that would submit resumes that the search committee could review that were not part of the original submission, now they've reopened the search. And there's no requirement for how long or how, there's no requirement for how long it has to be out there, so that's up to us to decide that. If there's a fourth option, I don't know what that is. So, do you know a fourth option?
I do not. I do not, unfortunately.
Neither do I. So there we sit. I'm gonna, you wanna start?
Sure. Well, just to go back to where we were as we talked through the selection of our candidate, as we evaluated the three finalists that came before us, I think that we were all in agreeance that there was one candidate that stood apart from the other ones.
I would agree.
As we went through that discussion, we identified that, you know, is there-
Pardon me, forgive us, I apologize for-
No problem. We identified that, looking at each one in their own little ecosystem, would we feel comfortable pushing any individual forward past that one? And I think we all agreed that even without our leading candidate that we selected, we didn't feel 100% positive about pushing anybody else past that point. And I think I'm still at that point today. I don't think that I would feel comfortable in voting or in supporting or issuing an offer to one of the other two candidates, not without maybe going back and identifying if there are any other candidates out there.
I'm not sure I would disagree with that. I think I would, I would look at it a little bit differently, but I think we're in the same place. There was another candidate that I thought could do the job. Very qualified, in my respects, at least in my view. I thought he interviewed well. I thought there were some distinctions between the candidates that distinguished them, but not enough that I would say he couldn't do the job. But I would, too, like to see if there are other candidates that might be out there. So I, we're on the same page, but I do think there is a viable candidate there that, that may or may not be the right choice at this time. I don't think we know that, so. We're in the same place, but I do think there was a candidate that could do the job, potentially.
Okay.
That puts us in the same place?
Yes.
Pretty much, okay. So, do, we have two choices then. We could ask the committee to reconvene and review the existing portfolio, whatever that is, and see if there are any other candidates that they wanna bring forward. And I would recommend they look at all 36.
Yep.
Would you concur?
Absolutely.
Okay. Not just the eight they interviewed, but all 36. We could also ask the consultant to open it for a brief period of time and see if he has other candidates that have risen to the surface since we started this process and add them to that portfolio, or at least add the resumes to the portfolio of candidates. I would recommend that. I don't see a downside to that. Would you concur?
I would concur. There's one thing I would propose, though, in that process. You know, we expected this process to last roughly three to four months, and we kinda had some caps put on there and planned for preparations for budget season and town meeting as part of that. Now we're gonna be leaking well past that. I don't think that this is a quick turnaround in terms of what we're asking the search committee to do, asking the consultant to do, in terms of lining things up and having these kind of things tied up before we get to those points.
Well, yes and no. I, I agree that, that we're not going to have anyone in place that will be a meaningful contributor to town meeting. That's no question. I don't care who we get, unless they're an incredible fast study, in which case we're gonna grab them quickly. You're right, we won't have any in place. Depending on, on what comes out of the next step that we've just decided on, that doesn't have to take a long period of time. I don't know how long, I haven't asked the question, but take a wild guess, two, three weeks? Wild guess. That would bring us to mid, two-thirds February. We could be potentially interviewing candidates beginning of March, potentially. It's possible, and I, and I wouldn't expedite the process just to accomplish this, don't misunderstand what I'm going, I'm just trying to play it out.
Yep.
We could potentially have a candidate in place by mid-April. They won't be a meaningful contributor to town meeting, so we're gonna be on our own there, which raises a whole new question.
Right.
But, you know, I think that's possible, but if we don't have the candidate, we don't have the candidate. You know, I mean, we'll take as long as it takes to get the right person. I know you share that.
Yes.
And I know Jeff would as well.
Absolutely.
So, shall we, there's two of us here, and we're in agreement. Shall we move forward with that?
I, I would just ask one other question. Is there a point in this where we start considering the appointment of an interim?
Well, that's the next question.
Yeah.
Okay, but let's deal with this one first.
Okay.
All right, you got one ahead of me, but thank you for, we're on the same page here.
Okay.
The answer to that is yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we, we have to do that.
Okay.
So, are we in agreement, then, that we'll contact the consultant? I'll do it tomorrow. And I will ask him to reopen the search for whatever period of time he deems appropriate to bring in some additional candidates. I think these will be candidates that have surfaced that he will probably know more about.
Be able to reach out directly to, yeah, absolutely.
And add that to the pool, ask the committee to get together, review that, and do whatever they, whatever their thing is, interview whoever they want, and then bring forward whoever they want.
Yep.
And just to do it expeditiously, but not to rush the process so that it's not effective.
Absolutely.
Is that fair?
Yes.
We have a deal. I don't think we need to make a motion on that, we're just, we're in agreement. Now the second question. We need, in my opinion, to have someone, should, I'm with you, we need an interim. You and I can't do this. And I'm tired. So, we can't provide, there needs to be someone in place that will provide the day-to-day direction now that we're at least two months out from getting. If all had gone as we hoped, we got through it, 'cause December is a slow month, and we did well to get there, but things don't always go the way we plan.
Yes.
So here we sit, so I agree with you. What I would ask is, though, that we defer that decision until next Monday when Jeff is here.
Yep.
'Cause I think he should be part of that discussion, but I think I'm 100% in agreement with you, we gotta get someone into an interim position where people here, we could still play a role, you know, if, if we need to assist in any way, but they need to have someone in here they can go to.
Constant.
100% agreement.
Absolutely.
Yeah. We're on the same page, my friend.
Very good.
But we'll, we'll put that on the agenda for next Monday.
Yep.
'Cause I, I do think Jeff should be part of that discussion, that's, that's a significant decision, however we choose to go in that direction.
Got it.
Okay, we have a plan. We had one before, we'll hope this is the same.
Maybe.
Let's hope there isn't a Plan C.
Yeah.
Anyway, it is what it is. All right, Sue, can you do us a favor? Can you, just for the benefit of Jeff, can you just type up this conversation that we just had? Are you agreeable with that, Kevin?
Absolutely.
I mean, the minutes, I'm not talking about the minutes, just this piece? And get it right out to Jeff?
Sure.
I don't think he's watching cable tonight, he's driving somewhere in the Connecticut Turnpike.
I'll get it to him tomorrow.
Okay. So he'll have a good view and understanding of that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other thoughts on it, Kevin? Anything you wanna add to it?
No, no, I think that's quite enough for one evening.
I think so, too. Scott, did you wanna add anything? Okay.
I'm ready.
Yeah, let the games begin, huh? All right. I just had a couple of updates, you may have some, too, as well, Kevin. We are in, Scott, Chuck mentioned it, but we are in beginning negotiations with both the police and the fire.
Yep.
We have met preliminarily with the fire department, and we're meeting next week, next week with the police. We have plugged in a number into the budget that we think is a reasonable number, and that we've been pretty successful at that every time. I don't, well, I don't know, I don't wanna speak how negotiations go, but we'll see. Anyway, we have started that. Public safety building, just to let you know, we, we will not have, we'll have a reconciliation on that probably by, hopefully by mid-March. We're gonna have an executive session next Monday on a component of that, that Matt and I were in Boston yesterday for a wonderful five-hour visit in mediation, which we were successful.
Oh, good.
But we'll discuss that in the executive session, 'cause it involves a lawsuit. Pardon me, sorry, I am losing this. I have one other item. Oh, on the, just one thing on the public safety building, we are gonna have, I may have mentioned this, but we're gonna have an open house, I believe it is March. I'm gonna impress my grandkids and look at my phone. He laughs. If you haven't been down there recently, Kevin, you should go. You really should. I, I think it is the 20, it's either the 25th or 26th of March, one of those two days. It'll be 10 o'clock in the morning, regional dispatch is gonna make a big deal out of it, they're hoping to get the governor here, which would be terrific, 'cause we're only the second regional dispatch center to open. And they go live April 1st, which I tried to encourage him to go April 2nd, but they seem to think there's some humor in going April 1st, so. Anyway, but it'll be a fun day. It is a beautiful building. It has been a very painful process for a lot of reasons, that, most of which are out of our control, that we will all digest at some point in the future. Part of what we were in in Boston relates to that, as you know. I would just say that if, if this had just been a police station, we would have done this very differently.
Right.
But because we were under a state contract with very specific timeframes, not a whole lot we could do. But we'll, we'll be more than happy to have a five-hour disclosure discussions, discussion on this, 'cause it is what it is, and, and it's not gonna be over when it's over. We are starting to look at the fire station. I don't know if you watched the meeting.
I did.
Oh, then you know.
Yep.
Okay, and I won't waste anymore, 'cause that's on TV, too, so.
Yep.
I won't waste everybody's time. Being interesting, I will say one thing. Maybe, I'm not an engineer, okay, and I don't build buildings, but I find the pricing of that illogical. I can't for the life of me understand how renovating that building, as old as it is, with the problems that it has and the unknowns that are in there, would cost more than tearing it down and building a new building when it will take four months less in time to do that.
Right.
And I'm, and I'm gonna encourage the, and because I'm not thrilled with the pricing we've gotten to date, I'm, I'm gonna encourage Matt to go out and, even if it costs us $5, $6,000, to get an alternate pricing on these plans that is not associated with the architect. I mean, what's the harm? To me, that's money well spent to validate what didn't work out the first time.
Right.
Does that make sense?
I think it makes sense, yeah. I, I will say, though, the chief's comments before about how eager that everybody is to get out of that building because of the issues that they're facing throughout the winter in terms of heating and making, and there's actually people who are gonna have to stay there, so.
The good news is they'll have more room, so they can spread out the buckets a little bit more effectively, but that, that building has outlived its life.
Right.
And the renovation model is such that while it will work, it's not ideal, because you're gonna have, you're gonna have bays on both sides of the building. Whereas if we tear it all down, and, and there are, there are relocation costs, we understand that, but we've looked into those, and we're still looking into them, but they're not insurmountable. They're not the difference in cost. And there is a plan, or the beginnings of a plan, that seems feasible to accommodate that. It's a decision yet to be made, but certainly from a, a use of the facility, a new facility is the right answer, because it's one set of bays in one location, it's a two-story building as opposed to one-story building, you can design it to look like the rest of the, I mean, there are a lot of pluses to that, and the unknowns go away, completely go away. So I think the contingency on the remodeling is, I think 20%, and I think the contingency on a new construction is 10%. That's a lot of money.
Yeah.
That's a half a million bucks.
Right.
So, to be determined, but we're gonna take our time and get this one right, because there's no MECC, there's no regional dispatch on this one, so we're not under the time crunches that we were under, but you're right, they got, we gotta fix this thing. That building is terrible.
Yeah.
Terrible, been terrible for a long time. That's it on that. Anything new on Lawrence Street, by the way?
I was gonna briefly touch on, we posted an update on the 21st of January, just giving people our, what we try to do is we set up a structure of milestones, what we're asking the project team to do is to give us updates on those individual milestones with completion. We have essentially four main milestones that are in progress right now. The mobilization of Rose and Control and Clearing is completed, that was done in September. We have the Sheep Isle wall construction, which is 70% done, the bridge demo and construction, which is 35% done, and the drainage and utility installation, which is about 47% done. 47 is a very precise number, by the way, I'm not sure exactly how they got that, but that gives you an idea at least of progress.
You can put any number they want.
Yeah.
That's the beauty of mathematics, you can have it say whatever you want. I've been, I went down, they have all the conduits in there, it's really, they've done quite a bit of work.
Yep, and you know, there's a lot of restrictions and things they're fighting against in terms of the weather and the water level still, but there is progress being made, and to do, we had a quick discussion that was related to something outside of the actual project itself, but we were quoted as saying that we are currently still on schedule for that road to be reopening sometime in the early spring. So, we're gonna keep that in mind, we're gonna keep updating everybody as much as we can as we get new updates, and we're gonna keep following up with the project team to make sure that we're still realizing that progress.
Yeah, they've, they've worked pretty hard, I've gone down there pretty much every week, and they've worked in some pretty lousy weather, too.
Yeah.
I give them credit, if-
There's been guys in that water when it's pretty cold.
It's about 12 degrees below, yeah, yeah. No, they've, they've been, they've been working in some nasty weather.
Yeah.
They're trying their very best, as best I can tell.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, that's 47%, huh?
47% of that fourth milestone.
Not 47, 47.2?
Not 46, not 46.
Not 47.2?
Big difference, big difference.
Okay. That's good. Anything else?
No, that's everything I have for mine, thank you.
Okay, I think that's everything I had, too. Scott, did you wanna add anything? Okay. Sue, did we miss anything?
No, we're good.
I know we have about four hours of signing to do.
Yes, we do.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for joining us. We are meeting again next Monday at 7 o'clock, I think that is February 4th?
Fourth.
February 4th, Monday, not Tuesday. And we look forward to hopefully you joining us. Thank you very much, and stay warm, I guess we're in for some tough weather. And don't catch my cold. Thank you again, and have a good night.